Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call to order the April 20th, 2022, meeting of the Council of City of Springdale. I would ask that you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, you have bound us together in a common life. Help us in the midst of our struggles for justice and truth, to confront one another without hatred or bitterness, and to work together with mutual forbearance and respect. Amen.
Amen. Ms. McNear, you do roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Gantez? Mr. Hawkins?
Present.
Mr. Jacobs?
Present.
Mr. Ramirez?
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Present.
Mr. Vanover?
Present. Council, I've received a request from the administration to add an executive session, so I need a motion. Ms. Weiscup?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to add an executive session under 8A.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All right, Ms. McNear, you poll council on the addition of the executive session.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Do we get to say what it's for?
Not till I read it.
Okay. Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Ramirez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye. Okay, and as Ms. Weiscup said, we're going to insert that just prior to ordinances and resolutions this evening. All right, with that, we've got the minutes from our April 6 meeting before us. If there are not any additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All right, all those approving amendments is published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved with six affirmative votes. Okay, well, we're into committee and official reports. First off this evening, they have civil service. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Civil Service Commission did meet on March 3rd, and all members were present. What we're seeing now in our meetings, quite frankly, is a discussion that lends itself to the hiring process. So let me start off by commenting that within the hiring process and even the promotional process, we are looking at levels of flexibility that we need in order to accomplish our objectives. For example, within the recruiting of the Account Clerk One Finance position, here's what we found, that we had four applicants that were still remaining on the Account Clerk list, which is set to expire, which was set to expire April 1st. We attempted to contact all four of those individuals. Two responded that they were no longer interested, and the other two, we left messages with no response. And so we decided that we need to move forward with this, and what we did was we started to waive the testing requirement in order to move things forward. And as a result, we ended up with 39 applicants, and 11 interviews, and several offers have been made and are pending. So again, with the way things are right now, the competitive nature of trying to fill positions within the municipal offices, we know that within the rules and regulations of the commission, we have to look at ways to be flexible in order to be able to track candidates and get them in here in a timely manner. With the help of Mr. Yule and administration, I think we're going in the right direction. In addition, within the custodian hiring process, there was two open positions. Six individuals have been interviewed, and candidates have received offers, so I think those offers are pending as well. But what we're starting to look at, instead of looking at all of the different testing, is to look at qualifications within the applications, and the applications are coming in in a variety of manner, a variety of ways, online, in person, within the various hiring organizations, indeed, the whole nine yards. So again, the policies and procedures that were in place before this type of situation occurred, we're finding that they're still good, but we have to tweak them in order to make sure that we can get to individuals and get positions filled in a timely manner. So again, each time that we meet, we find that this is necessary to look at another situation in order to build that flexibility. And as a result, as I said, I think we're heading in the right direction. The Director of Environmental Health and Sanitation, again, looking at qualifications, we ended up with three applications. And as you may or may not know, that position has been difficult to fill. So we changed the title, and that helped us against some other individuals. And so we said, let's look at qualifications and just get resumes in here so that we can move forward with it. That's all that I have for this evening. Any questions?
Don't see any.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Rules and laws, Ms. Gantez?
No report, Mr. President.
Finance Committee, Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Planning Commission, Ms. Weiscup?
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission met on April 12th at 7:00 PM, and we had a conditional use from Sweeney Chevy Quick Lube at 33 West Kemper Road. It was a public hearing. Basically, they want to turn their back end area into a quick lube so that when you go into the service area, you can leave your car there, they'll take your car and bring it over to the quick lube area, take care of it, and bring it back. It just keeps it separate so that if people need their car serviced for other things, that leaves those bays open, and that way the people who just need an oil change can get in and get out fairly quickly, and that was voted a 7-0 vote. We had a conditional use for Creative Dreams Learning Center at 12117 Princeton Road. We did continue that to the next meeting. That owner is going to have more, we needed more information, she didn't have everything that we needed, so she's new. She's the first time ever opening up a daycare, and we wanted to give her every benefit of the doubt that we could, and so she is coming back with everything that she needs at the next meeting. And that was voted 7-0 to continue. We had a final development plan for Springdale Commerce Park, PUD, Buildings 1 and 4. That's at 12110 Princeton Pike. For those of you, it's the old GE Park. And they were building Buildings 1 and 4, and after a lot of consideration and a couple changes as pertains to windows, they, it was voted 7-0 for them to go forward, and this will be the last two buildings that they have in that development, and that will be full, and we're very excited about that. And then finally, we had a concept plan, discussion only, no decisions, for TCM repurposing, that's the Tri-County Mall, at 11700 Princeton Pike. David Wallace came, he showed different slides, a slide presentation. He talked a little bit about Phase 1, and that they're expecting Phase 1 to be finished around fourth quarter of 2024. And we listened, and it was a fairly favorable discussion back and forth, getting more information, and we're excited to see when they come back this summer with their final development plan. And that is all that I have, unless you have anything, Mr. Ramirez?
That's complete.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. BZA, Ms. Gantez?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Board of Health, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Health met on the 14th, and the good news continues in terms of indicators. In terms of documented COVID cases, there were four in the city in the last two and a half weeks. In Hamilton County, six people are on a ventilator, for example. So the numbers are great, they're continuing that trend, at least for now. The Commissioner, the nurse are still doing vaccine clinics, and they're going full steam ahead. Within the last month, I think we had a week where we still gave out over 200 shots, but they're focusing them on, focusing those shots on the most vulnerable population, seniors, people with immune-compromising situations. So that's going full steam ahead. The vaccines continue at the Community Center, with the exception of tomorrow, on the 21st, they'll be back here, and then they go back to the Community Center for the near future. The Old Boulevard, now known as the Bully, is ready in terms of licensing, so there's some progress there. Mr. Coleman mentioned, the Director of Environmental Health, there was a shift in that personnel, but there was discussion about how confident Commissioner Clayton is about the new hire, and so he feels very good about going forward. And a last note would be accreditation is still full steam ahead, and it's on track to be finished in time. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Don't see any lights. Thank you, sir. Capital improvements, Ms. Gantez?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
OKI, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. OKI did meet on 4/14 for the Board of Directors. There's two items from the meeting that I think would be interesting for folks to hear about. The first one is, there was discussion about the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill, the $7.5 billion infrastructure component. There's about $140 million in Ohio up for grabs right now for EV charging stations, which is interesting. The reason it's interesting, too, is Springdale was the example that they used in the meeting for a possible place that would make sense for an EV charging station. They brought up their map that they used to kind of show the value of an EV station and the Tri-County Mall area, which I know there's been discussion possibly putting one or more there. Springdale was the example that they used as a good possibility because it's on the corridor of 275, 75, 71, and 74, which are all approved corridors for placement of EV charging stations with this funding, within one mile of the corridor. There's a 20% match that's required for it, but they described possibilities for private companies to do build-out and local community, get some profit from it without actually investing money. So that was interesting and good to know, maybe something we can look into. The other thing I wanted to bring up was a presentation on OKI apps. Our tax dollars spend, we spend a lot of time and money with OKI and infrastructure components. One thing they do as a service is provide a number of applications, not just for city, but for residents to use, to understand better traffic, solar sustainability, safety issues around them. All the OKI apps are available on their website, www.OKI.org/mapsapps. One that I wanted to highlight that they did, too, was GoSolarReady app, and it's really interesting because you can put in your address or any address, and with the data that they have, they can tell you how viable that building is for solar, in terms of the expected value you'd be able to get out of it, wattage, what type of system, and where on the site makes the most sense for it. The reason I highlight that is, right now, I know, at least in my neighborhood, we've gotten a couple solar installers coming around, kind of selling what they can do, and I think it's good to know that there's another resource people can go to outside of a salesperson to get a feel for how appropriate solar might be for your location. And that's available is the GoSolarReady app on the OKI site. So I thought that was interesting, so I want to pass that along. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Does the OKI app also give recommended installers, or do they have any direction for that, or just more what would be good for each individual?
No, the application, and it's a web app, so you use it through your browser, it's not something you download. It just provides from public data and data they have, where it would be and what the estimate would be on the wattage you could expect to receive, and it gives you a judgment call of like, hey, this is a good site, or maybe, or it depends. But it doesn't refer you to installers, there's no tie-ins to commercial, but it's a good checkpoint, I think, for that reason. It gives you kind of an independent look at what's available.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor's report, Mayor Webster?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several items, some very exciting ones. First off, there's a press release, this was dated April 6, from Representative Jessica Miranda. She applauds the passage of House Bill 291 to name a portion of the state route I-275, the Officer Kaya L. Grant Memorial Highway. And the Memorial Highway will be honoring Officer Kaya Grant, L. Grant, a police officer killed in line of duty on March 21st, 2020. And I know Mrs. Miranda's worked very hard at this for the last couple of years, and we're very pleased that this is coming if you wish, and so we should see those signs go up there, I would think, you know, very shortly. The next item I want to touch on is Arbor Day. I've got a proclamation here to read that I'll present to Mr. Agarcola for him to add to his collection down at the Public Works facility. But while I'm on that, I just want to remind everybody that this coming Friday down to Community Center, we're going to have a Tree City USA presentation. It's a gathering of about 53 organizations here in southwest Ohio. 150-plus people will be in to receive their Tree City USA award, and some of these cities like Cincinnati's had a Tree City USA for like 41 years, and so that pales in comparison to Springdale's 30 years, but we're still very proud of the 30 years and the job that Jeff and his predecessors have done in perpetuating our forestry program here in Springdale. So, but anyway, so without further ado, let me read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed 150 years ago with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change, reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-saving oxygen, and providing habitats for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the City of Springdale wishes to encourage its residents to plant and maintain trees in the city. Now therefore, I, Doralese Webster, Mayor of the City of Springdale, do hereby proclaim April 29th, year 2022, is Arbor Day in the City of Springdale, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support the city's urban forestry program. So, Mr. Agarcola? And in observance of Arbor Day, we will have two ceremonies on April 29th, one at 1:00 PM across the road here at our Springdale Elementary School, and then we will also have another service celebration over at Heritage Hill School at 2:20. Mr. Vanover will take care of that one for me, I've got a conflict there, but we're looking forward to planting a couple trees in the elementary schools and hearing their songs and so forth and so on. So it'll be a nice day. Also, I have another proclamation I'd like to read today, and this is one honoring teachers. Whereas since 1984, the National PTA has designated a week to recognize teachers for their hard work and dedication to students, and whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, I, Doralese Webster, Mayor of the City of Springdale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 6, 2022, is Teacher Appreciation Week in the City of Springdale, and encourage all members of the community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation toward teachers and the school staff for their dedication and devotion to their work. And this, I think, would be especially rewarding for Mrs. White, who's sitting here in the front row, since she's a longtime teacher and currently president of the Princeton Board of Education. I'm going to ask Andy Koosh to come up and accept this. I think all the cities in the Princeton School District are passing this proclamation, and they're all going to be presented. I think one day next week, isn't Andy, over at the Princeton School and the Business Partnership Meeting?
I'm not sure if they're having their next Business Partner Breakfast next week, but at the next one, I'm sure.
Okay. And I'm not through. No more proclamations. However, we'd like to talk, take a little bit of time to talk about SOS. I know Julie Matheny has appeared before you a couple times in the last few months talking about our scholarship program, and we have concluded that, and the Scholarship Committee has chosen the recipient. However, we have not been able to notify that recipient yet, so I'd like to withhold that name, we'll share that with you hopefully at the next meeting. But anyway, the other thing, and this is a really exciting project that we've undertaken, is that we're going to start a clothing drive to support the Ukrainian people. And we're doing this in conjunction with the Springdale Fire Department and Matthew 25 Ministries. And so what you can do is take your items and drop them off at the fire department, and let me read this brochure, there's a stack of them back there on the back table, so if all of you would like to take one, I'd appreciate that. And so, please join Springdale offering support in support of Ukraine by donating the following items: personal care products, bar soap, sanitizer, toothpaste, toothbrushes, shampoo, body wash, deodorant, lotion, and feminine hygiene products; paper products, toilet paper, paper towels, first aid items, bandages, gauze, first aid tape, anesthetic creams, hydrogen peroxide, alcohol, latex gloves, and instant cold packs; new and gently-used clothing; linens, quilts, bedspreads, comforter sheets, bedcases, and blankets; baby items, baby and infant supplies, diapers, baby wipes, diaper rash ointment, baby wash, baby shampoo, baby lotions, new stuffed toys, non-battery-operated plays, and no food donations. We'll come back and ask for food in Christmas time, but no food now, just the clothing items. But anyway, please drop these donations off at the back entrance of the Springdale Fire Department, and we'll have some directional signs go up there within the next week so everybody knows exactly where to go. And you can do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the cutoff is May 20th, and we're hoping that we have enough goods dropped off that Matthew 25 will have to come over before that and pick up. But they will come off, whenever we get the big box filled, they'll be able to pick it up. So anyway, we appreciate everybody's, everybody out there, appreciate you supporting the SOS effort to help the people in Ukraine. And I think that concludes my report.
Mr. President? All right. Excuse me, Clerk Counsel, Finance Director, Ms. McNear?
Thank you, Mr. President. The General Fund update through March 31st, 2022, for receipts, based on a net receipt budget of $21.218 million, and we have received $6.239 million, which is 34%. And those are made up of five major general fund resources, which are earnings tax, real estate taxes, paramedic services, local government funds, and mayor's court, for a subtotal of $5.753 million, which is 92% of the anticipated budget. For expenditures, based on a net expenditure budget of $21.349 million, we have spent $5.178 million, which is 25% of the budget. And our general fund ending balance through March 31st is $6.916 million. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Minister Adish's report, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Several things, mostly from the Parks and Rec. Charlie Wilson wanted me to report that they have an opening for a part-time customer service representative, two part-time maintenance workers, one teen advisor. In addition, seasonal employment for two part-time maintenance workers. So a few events that's happening down there. Taking registration now for adult coed evening pickleball leagues. We hear a lot about the pickleball, so there you have it. Registration for swim lessons for members are going on now, and registration for NOM members will start on May 1st. Speaking of May 1st, registration starts for fall instructional youth soccer at that time. Registration for the Self-Fish Swim Team starts May 1st, and Meet the Coaches Night will be May 11th. Registration for the Club Rec Spring Extreme Event on May 13 starts May 1st. Now you're going to ask me what that is, so I'm going to tell you. I had to ask myself. Apparently, that's grades 5 through 8. They will have outdoor activities, they'll play games, kickball, slip-and-slide relays, and a variety of other things, based on the weather. They may end up moving at inside, but they assure me it's a fun event. May 28, swimming pool opens. May 30, Memorial Day, the Community Center will be closed. And just as a reminder, and I'll try to remember to send you an email as we get a little closer, Mr. Agarcola has volunteered to take pictures for the elected officials before the council meeting, May 18 at about 6:45. That's it. Thank you.
Just a clarification, the pool will be open on the 30th, all right? Just the rec center itself is closed.
All right. Excuse me, Law Director's report, Mr. Braun?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Okay, and Engineers' report, Mr. Riggs?
So I have some good news to report on the Community Center re-roofing project. The work is resumed, the skylights are being installed. In fact, I think one went in today. So we're looking to wrap that project up next month, and that same contractor actually is going to begin working on the Public Works Salt Dome roof next month as well. We've already had a pre-construction meeting with them, the building permit's been issued, and we're looking to get started next month and hopefully wrap up in about a month, so maybe right before 4th of July, or they're, you know, around there. The Northland Boulevard reconstruction project, we're still working on stage 3 plans. Stage 3 is almost like 90% level plans, so we're looking to get those submitted to ODOT on June 24th. The 747 curb replacement catch base repair project, no change there really. ALITA is our contractor, and they're looking to begin construction early, well, they say May 2nd, and will be complete with that work on July, in July. The East Kemper Road CSX rail bridge project, the SORT agreement has been executed. The, still working on finalizing the plans. Hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll have that wrapped up. So by the end of the month, we'll have plans ready, looking to go to advertisement in May, and we'll have a bid opening sometime in June. Let's see, we got the state route 747 urban paving, and that's going to occur after the curb and catch base repair project. We actually submitted stage 3 plans to ODOT yesterday on the 19th, and that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Communications, Ms. McNear, there any communications this evening?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll go to the floor for communications from the audience. Is anybody in the audience, like dressed counsel for any reason? Please. Well, there should be a pad there, you put your name and address just for records.
Okay.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Kevin Huff. I live in Beacon Hills. I'm resident of Springdale for the past nine years. I recently visited our firehouse. I recently visited our firehouse and was, I'd say shocked at the condition of not only the building itself, but the apparatus and the staffing levels. We've talked a lot about, in these meetings, we've talked a lot about expanding the city, the two new developments, the mall and over where the Sheridan site was, and nowhere, anywhere is there mention of expanding the fire department, or emergency services, or replacing trucks, or bettering the current, with the exception of two engines, the current apparatus are out of their service life and being held on by duct tape essentially. Staffing is down. I know we're working on recruiting new firefighters, but that process, to me, seems a little off, having to pay to apply to a job. I know discourages many firemen who don't have the money or don't want to invest the $50 into just being able to have the opportunity to come test for the fire department. And the station itself is, I think, running into the 70s with wood paneling and the paint falling off all over the place. So my question for counsel is, what are we doing to address the issues we're having at the fire department? I know also, within the last month, I've seen Sharonville squad standing at our station because we didn't have enough trucks in service. And Woodlawn made a fire run into the city because we didn't have staffing available to staff our units that weren't in service. So I'm asking counsel, what are we doing to address these issues, and how can we fix our fire department now and build it towards the future with all these developments that were bringing into the city?
You asking City Council, or are you asking Administration?
I'm asking City Council. What, does anyone have, we have any plans?
Go ahead. You guys want to answer that? Or you want us to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be honest with you, young man, I couldn't hear everything that you said, but you mentioned something about Sharonville.
Sharonville had, was...
Yeah, we had, we borrowed an ambulance from Sharonville because we had, we had three ambulances, two of them were out of commission, so we were down to one ambulance. And so we approached Sharonville to see if they would lend us one until we got at least one of ours back in service, which they very graciously did, and we'll be forever grateful for them for doing that, but we've already returned that. And we got, they told me today, we got the motor replaced in the one, and so we're back to, we have two operating, and I've got, the other one, I guess, is in the garage, so we have a third one. So we think we're in good shape there. And as far as the engines, and Brian, John, please jump in here and help me here, but we've got one that we just, one of the pumpers is like two years old, I believe, maybe three. We've got another one on order, another pumper, and so, you know, we don't see that we've got a problem with our capital rolling stock over in the fire department, so...
The engines are fine. The ladder truck is out of date and will not be tall enough to service the new buildings that are coming with the new development over by the mall. And the ambulances, one is 17 years old, and that's second out right now. The primary ambulance was just replaced, they just replaced the engine, and that's 10 years old, and the one that was damaged in the accident, it's still over at Ford, is nine years old. So, and the average service life of a squad is about 10 years. So we've reached, almost reached the end of all three service lives for these trucks, with no plans that I've heard from anyone to continue replacing these to make sure they're in service. I want to know as a resident that that 17-year-old ambulance is going to be able to come to my house and not break down or have an issue, to give you to the hospital. And that's an awful old truck for an ambulance that runs about 3,000 calls a year.
All I could tell you is that they were constantly looking at the rolling stock, and if it needs, if one of those units need to be replaced, we certainly will replace that. Now, to my knowledge, we do not have an ambulance on order, I don't think, do we?
We do not for '22, no.
No. We have nothing on over '22, but I could sit here and I could tell you exactly what we're going to do. If things work out the way we think they're going to work out with the TIF dollars coming in from the mall, and if that's the case, we can buy it, probably a new fire truck, every year if we wanted to buy one. That's the kind of revenues that will be generated. But I'm not going to sit here and promise that to you in case the development doesn't materialize the way we think it's going to. But all I can tell you is that, you know, we've always supplied this community with what it needed, in its rolling stock, its police cruisers, its ambulances, and its fire trucks, and we will continue to do that whether Tri-County Mall gets redeveloped or not. And a few years ago, we decided, okay, we don't have, we can't sit there and write a check for $600,000 or $700,000 for a pumper, but what we can do, we can buy it on the lease option purchase with three equal payments of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's what we've done with the last two, oh, with a number of vehicles over there. And we'll do the same thing with an ambulance. If we need to replace all three of the ambulances, we could do that tomorrow if we had to. So that's the last thing in the world that you need to worry about, is Springdale being able to provide a squad at your front door if you need it.
Right. I'm concerned because how many of us have cars that are 17 years old?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How many of us have cars that are 17 years old? That roll out on average of three times a day?
Well, so, let me ask you, who should, who should I listen to? Should I listen to the fire chief and his staff over there to tell me when they need to replace it, or should I listen to a resident that's concerned because we've got a 17-year-old ambulance?
No, I would think you listen to both of us and weigh the options, but one thing that firefighters look at when they look at where they're going to go apply to and work at is the equipment. And if you have old equipment, they don't want to come work in an old station with an old firehouse. They like having the new and the best like everyone else does. So if we're having a hard time recruiting firemen, we need to look at that too, and, you know, it just seems that those trucks are very old and we're kind of keeping them together. We're replacing motors, and, you know, one was wrecked a few weeks ago. I don't know whose fault, doesn't matter whose fault it was, but if that's out of service, that brings us down to two. And I think that as a council and as a community, we need to look at being proactive, so, okay, you know, we need to have plans to replace this now, so if it does, if it does get totaled out, because it's still standing at Ford, hasn't moved since the accident, I drive past it every day, that we need to be able to say, okay, let's get this truck ordered and moved today, rather than sit there and wait for the insurance to say, okay, we aren't going to pay for this, and, you know, and it's, the average bill time for an ambulance is almost a year and a half. So we'd be without, short of truck for a year and a half, and our primary truck is 17 years old. How hard can we run that truck before it breaks down? Then we're down to one truck, and we're going to borrow trucks, we're having to call other people to come in to pick up Springdale residents.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify a couple of things, by way of staffing, we're currently in the hiring process right now. We've wrapped up the physical agility testing, they wrapped up interviews today, and they should have, hopefully, two conditional job offers made by the end of the week. So we're getting closer to the staffing issue. Rolling stock is what it is, and we keep up with those. We don't have a set program, because sometimes there, we can extend the life of certain pieces of equipment. For instance, one of the ambulances went down. There was an issue, something was struck underneath it, and it dislodged a oil filter, causing all of the oil to drain out of the motor, and that's not good, the engine seized up, we have to replace the engine. So in essence, we have a new ambulance of sorts sitting over there right now. It's a brand-new engine. Now, I know all the parts that go on it are not necessarily new, but we believe we have a 2013, I think a 2012, 2013, and I think the one you keep referring to is a 2006 ambulance that we use as a third out. That's not a primary out. So we do run three ambulances when the need arises. We do have a third ambulance that can go out the door. So currently, we have two. We returned the one to Sharonville. The tower that you speak of, we were talking about replacing that two years ago, and the fire chief made a recommendation to us that let's get a engine in the house before we do a tower. That's the primary unit that runs out the door. It makes EMS runs, it can also handle the large majority of the fire runs that we service here in the city. You're correct in saying that the tower is not going to reach these taller buildings, but the city of Cincinnati does not have fire apparatus that can accommodate all of their structures either. So there's only so many feet they can put on a ladder on a vehicle, so we're limited by that. But moving forward, these are all things, with all the developments, those are all things we're taking into consideration. Turning radiuses as well, outriggers on towers, obviously with streets, that could present a problem if you can't put your outriggers out to get your ladder up to the tower, residential tower, that creates some concern. So our staff, as it sits now, are very much in tune to what the needs are of the, from a staffing perspective, but also an equipment perspective. We're currently doing a facilities assessment on all of our city facilities to help us guide and prioritize certain improvements that we can make. So I know you had a couple of other questions, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting, and I can give you my card and whatnot, we can talk about some, answer some of those questions.
Okay. I just, in visiting the firehouse and hearing everything, it was a little disconcerting the age of some of the trucks, and I wanted to kind of get that on counsel's radar, because, you know, I don't know, I don't, I haven't met, I've met the fire chief once, I haven't really talked to him, and I don't know if it's a budget issue or what, but having, you know, a second out truck right now that's 17 years old, makes me question, you know, do we need to go replace it if it's going to be a second out for a little while? Should we be moving forward to replacing it as opposed to waiting to see, is the insurance going to pay for a new truck? Is it going to fix the old truck that was in an accident? Or are we going to borrow another truck? You know, and then so forth. It just seems like our fire department is, could be much better than it is, and I think that will also affect those who apply, and the quality of candidate we get coming into the city.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, I thought Mr. Yule's update covered a number of items I was going to say, but first I want to say, I do appreciate you coming out tonight and taking time out to raise the concern. I think that's a perfectly valid question to ask this group. I hope you got some of the answers that you're looking for from Administration. I do want to highlight that facilities assessment that Mr. Yule mentioned in passing at the end. That is one of the key mechanisms I know I'm looking for as a member of council, to help prioritize some of that spend, especially as we talk about the new development TIF money, right? Because you're right, the fire building itself seems dated, it's still functional. The police department, same thing. The fitness center, community center today, it's the same challenge. So as a community, we will need to get together and figure out what those priorities are. I do want to also mention, it was about, I think, two years ago, the Public Safety Committee, which is a standing committee of council, did meet to review the staffing levels for the fire department and the police department specifically. Out of that, we did make a number of recommendations that were adopted that increased and changed the level of some of the staffing at the fire department, so we added additional positions and then filled those. We also made a conscious effort, which was difficult, to replace some of the part-time firefighters with full-time, and that also makes a big difference to some of the applicants you mentioned, right? Some people are very interested in the new toys, and I think you'll find, if you went to the fire station and talked to some of the team over there, they're still excited about the new fire trucks that they've gotten. We did look at the ladder truck two years ago, but that was deferred, and I think that makes sense, looking at the budget. There's only so much we can do, but it's not lost on us, we're not ignoring it. We do have public safety committee meetings, and we talk about that, and this group as a whole has talked about it as well. I think that facilities assessment will be interesting to look at, as we prioritize that. I do, we, I think we all know that if these developments continue, we are going to have to make some changes, not just with the fire department, but also police. We might need to add a substation, you know, closer to the core of the city, things like that. That building needs more renovations. We invested over a quarter million dollars a year and a half ago in it to update the locker rooms and ventilation, and update some of the jail, the holding cells. So we're making those investments. I just didn't want you to think that it's being ignored, because I haven't seen that, but it is fair to ask what we're doing. So if you didn't get enough detail, I'd encourage you to follow up with Mr. Yule as he offered, and then all of us are also available to answer those questions as well. I can tell you personally, my stepdad was a fireman with Sharonville for 20 years, more than that. So I'm very personally sensitive, and I feel tuned into it. I know Chief Stanley does a great job over there with the team that he has, and they've got a really impressive group of people. I wouldn't get hung up on the 17-year bus, per se, especially when you talk about diesel and heavy-duty machines like that, but it is not the first out the door, and we're always going to have to take a look at that. So I guess I'm saying, I appreciate you coming out and asking the question. If you don't feel like you've got enough answers, feel free to reach out to us, and we can dig into it some more. We do want you to feel safe. I have, my parents still live in Springdale, and they're older. I have family here too, so I'm, if I do need to call an ambulance, I hope it's going to be there too, so I'm interested. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Echoing what Mr. Anderson said, appreciate you coming out and sharing your input and questions. Just a few things. The big thing, and you heard this word a couple of times, is priorities. So the number-one priority, I think, for council, for the administration, over the time period where I've been here since 2009, in terms of sitting on council, has been police and fire. You go back to 2009, we had a lot of cuts that took place, it was all a lack of funding from the state, some changes the state legislature and the governor made that impacted us greatly. The things that we were focused on, we couldn't go out and do our annual $750,000 to $1 million for street projects, road repairs every year, we had to give that up because we didn't have the money to. There's always still a focus on making sure police and fire was able to do what we need to do for our residents and keep us safe throughout that time period. So it's been a major priority, it will continue to be a major priority. The other part in terms of forecasting, it's something that the administration and council continues to look at. Each year when we go through, when we do a budget, that process looks like this. The directors, so of each department, in this instance, you'd be talking about the fire chief, Chief Stanley, will give a quote-unquote wish list to the administration. The administration will work with those directors in going through what is really needed, what is sort of wanted, and where are we at in terms of, again, prioritizing the needs so that we can have every department function as it's supposed to and take care of residents, what have you. That then comes to the Finance Committee. Finance Committee goes over that, has that discussion. The budget goes out to the entire dais members of council, and then council goes over all that, and we go over and have that discussion with regard to it. There are things that get forecasted out, and you've heard from Mr. Yule, and Mr. Jones, and Mr. Anderson regarding some things in terms of rolling stock, trucks. Those things are very, very expensive. I think that the engine we just got may have been the biggest capital, biggest capital cost that we've made, I don't know if it's ever, or at least in recent time. Those ladder trucks, just from the time that I've been on council from '09, have gone up exponentially. And so we're not flushed with cash, you know, we're very prudent with regard to the money we have, and they're very optimistic with regard to money that we will get in the future, hopefully, but this is not like some place to our south that has a golf course that loses money, or another place that's got a convention center that prints money. We're not in that same position. The money that we have and the money that we're going to get, we do forecast, we have to look at what are the priorities in terms of what we have to take care of, and when do we have to take care of them. And your question in terms of council directly, you heard from the administration, I won't speak for the other six people up here, but part of what we're doing, because we're part of the legislative body, is we're listening to the input and taking input from the administration in terms of what do we need. They're coming to council asking for money, essentially, or we're approving money. We've got to listen to what that input is. The person who has the greatest amount of input and is closest to it is our fire chief. So when our fire chief tells administration, we need X, administration tells council, we need X, council has a discussion with regard to that, and we still have to be prudent with regard to, and good stewards of your finances, your tax dollars, my tax dollars, everybody's tax dollars, with regard to what we do. But that information comes to us, and if our fire chief, or police chief, or whomever says, we're okay, or we can do this next year, or in two years, I trust that person. They've been put in a position to handle that and make those decisions. So, you know, as you've heard, none of this is stuff that we haven't thought about, the new developments, be it Merchant Street, be it at the area soon to be formerly Tri-County Mall, we realize you increase the population, we're going to have to have more police, more fire, staff... police, more fire, staffing's going to change, facilities may change, and you heard, there's discussion with regard to assessing the facilities, our five buildings, and that may result in a new firehouse, or a firehouse moving in, and we may have a new building or an old building redeveloped to house the fire department. So rest assured, those are all things that are on our radar going forward, but it is something where we've got to make choices, we can't do everything all at once, but, you know, rolling stock is something that gets talked about every single year, and it's not just for that year, but it's also forecasting for, hey, we're going to do this this year, or we're going to have to wait a little bit, okay?
Mayor Wabber.
Yeah, I just, I could just say, you know, the high rises, or the, this new development, Tri County Mall is going to have several six, eight, ten-story buildings. And, you know, we used to have a ten-story building in the city with the Sheraton. Well, you can't service anything above like a four floors. Now, we, I was asked the same question at one of the community engagement meetings we had a few weeks ago, and our retired fire chief was sitting in the front row, and I said and answered that question, I wonder how, what we're going to do to service these six, eight-story buildings. I says, yeah, the fire code only requires us to service like up to four stories. If you go, if you go above four stories, you have to have self-contained fire suppression systems in place. And so nobody has fire trucks that can go up to ten stories, ten-story high, and so we're not going to do it either. So it just, they just don't make equipment like that to service ten stories. And so after the meeting, fire chief said, our fire, retired fire chief, who used to sit right here on city council, said, you answered that perfectly, that's exactly right, four stories is what we require to service and have equipment to do so, and we have that presently with our ladder wagon. Now, also, when he was sitting on city council, his advice was, we don't even replace that ladder wagon. And here's a guy that's been in the business for his whole life, and he said, when that goes kaput, just don't replace it, replace me with another pumper. And so, and then when this Mr. Jones said, last year, we put the budget together, fire chief, you know, he said, is it time to do the ladder wagon? He says, no, I'd rather have a pumper. So now, we have a pumper on order now, being built, and we're paying lease payments on the thing. So, so, appreciate your concern, but believe me, I think you're in good hands.
Mr. Yule.
Just to kind of land this plane, too, we had some early discussions probably five months ago with the fire department, knowing that the squads are one of those things that make the volume of runs, that the high, that's the high-run volume, right? All of our EMS calls, right? So in theory, we have a EMS department that puts out fires. So our ambulances are a priority, right, in that facility. But several months ago, they formed an internal committee to do a, made a ambulance committee to start looking at different specifications on what that next build-out would look like. So they have, I think, one more meeting, the design team has actually gone to a manufacturer to spec out certain things on a box, on a unit, and you are correct, the build-out time is between fourteen and eighteen months. So we do know that probably sometime later this year, we'll have to place that order so that we can get delivery, hopefully sooner than later, but we do know there's a time lag. But, so we're months away from probably hitting the go button on, in order, so that they can build that out and then figure out the financing.
Well, and I'm going to come at a little different angle. We've got an Ariel, it's twenty years old, in service, still in service. To me, that's an accreditation and a well-deserved pat on the back and efforts of our fire team over there to keep that vehicle going. And they, the vehicle before it was twenty-plus. So, and these are diesels, these aren't gasoline engines, so it's not a fair comparison to say, you know, well, I've got a 2009 Ford work van, and she's still going. She's not the prettiest thing, but she gets me there and gets the job done, what I need. The Ariel, Mr. Hawkins mentioned, the one there was $675,000. The next one is going to be at least double that. And there aren't going to be many communities our size that are going to be able to afford new toys, because the cost of them is very... Talked to Mr. Agricole about the costs of our dump trucks that we put out through the snow and the winter. So it's, you know, this is, to me, it's a well-deserved pat on the back, and I haven't heard one of our firefighters come in and say, man, I got to take that old goat out down the road. I think they hop on that truck and respond to a call with the same vigor that they did when they started. So to me, that's a, you know, a well-deserved pat on the back, and that's the type of people that we have working in our fire department. Our PD's the same way. So it's, you know, it's just a different shot and different set of eyes looking from a different point. Yeah, it's, you know, our wish lists are out there, we've, you know, had plans in place, we shifted plans, we have that new apparatus coming through. So it's, it's not that we're just sitting here waiting for something to happen. We are, you know, actively looking ahead because we have to. It's your tax dollar, and, you know, we could, you know, the last thing you want is for us to be privileged with it. So, but again, I thank you for coming out, voicing your concerns. Mr. Yule is a wealth of information. If you've got any other concerns, questions, you know, reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, still in communications from the audience, second call, third and final call, we'll close communications from the audience. Ms. Weiscup.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to go back to an executive session to discuss economic development and also include bond counsel in our executive session.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All right, Ms. McNear, you poll counsel on going into the executive session.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup.
Aye.
Mrs. Ganthos.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye, and we will ask Mr. Andrew Spoor to join us, bond counsel. And are we, we're in the, the new one back there? And so we shall return. Yes. All right, council is back in session after executive session. At this point of our agenda, we're in ordinances and resolutions, and first off this evening is ordinance thirteen, twenty, twenty-two. Ms. Weiscup.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to read this by title only, and I want to preface that by saying it is four legal pages long, and it is all available. If you would like to get a copy from the city, you can contact them and do a public records request, it will all be available, but just to save time, and honestly, Ms. McNear's voice, I would like to make a motion to make it by title only.
Motion, second, discussion. Ms. McNear, you poll counsel on title only.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup.
Aye.
Mrs. Ganthos.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye. Seven-zero, the read by title only. Ms. McNear, when you're ready.
Ordinance number thirteen, twenty, twenty-two, an ordinance repealing ordinance number twelve, two thousand and five, declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Springdale, Ohio to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of service agreements, and declaring an emergency.
All right, council have heard the reading, title only, of ordinance thirteen, twenty, twenty-two. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Hawkins.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one point, since we did just read it by title only, and it is the emergency clause, can you just get a statement as to why it's an emergency instead of the normal course? Is it contracts, development schedule? What is the reason it's an emergency ordinance?
Mr. Braun, you want to tackle that?
There's a couple of reasons. As everyone is aware, we're working on the Tri County redevelopment project. There's a schedule of things that have to take place in a certain order, and I think we had talked about that two meetings ago as well, that we needed to pass a succession of pieces of legislation. One of them was a development agreement, then an amended development agreement, now a TIF agreement, and we're asking that this be passed as an emergency so that we can begin to provide those assurances to the developer that this mechanism, this economic development tool, is available to them so that we can keep the project on schedule, and obviously begin to generate this revenue for the benefit of the city at the earliest possible date.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. I do agree that that makes a lot of sense not to delay it for a technical like this. We've been talking about this TIF since the beginning of the development, and the developer should get those assurances. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more lights. Ms. McNear, you poll counsel.
Mrs. Ganthos.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup.
Aye.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye, ordinance number thirteen, twenty, twenty-two passes with seven affirmative votes. Next up, we have ordinance fourteen, excuse me, fourteen, twenty, twenty-two. Ms. McNear, when you're ready.
Ordinance number fourteen, twenty, twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk of council finance director to enter into an agreement with the TEC Engineering Incorporated for the provision of professional services for the operations and maintenance of the city of Springdale's traffic control system and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city desires to enter into an agreement for the provision of professional services for the operations and maintenance of the city's traffic control system, and whereas the city has accepted the proposal submitted by TEC Engineering Incorporated and seeks to enter into an agreement specifying the terms and conditions for the provision of the professional services. Now therefore, it be ordained by the council, the city of Springdale, Ohio members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the mayor and clerk of council finance director are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with TEC Engineering Incorporated for the provision of professional services for the operations and maintenance of the city's traffic control system, the agreement. A copy of the agreement is attached as exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section two, consistent with the agreement, the clerk of council finance director is hereby authorized to pay TEC Engineering Incorporated a monthly flat fee according to the following schedule. May first, twenty, twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty, twenty-three, forty-seven-hundred dollars a month. May first, twenty, twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four, forty-seven-hundred dollars a month. May first, twenty, twenty-four through April thirtieth, twenty, twenty-five, forty-seven-hundred dollars a month. Section three, that the clerk of council finance director is further authorized to pay TEC Engineering for all other services performed outside the agreement pursuant to the terms contained therein. Section four, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall be subject to the terms of Article two D, three D of the charter, be effective immediately. The reasons for the emergency is the immediate need to enable the parties to execute the agreement as soon as possible to preserve the rates negotiated and begin the work related to the project.
All right, council have heard the reading of ordinance fourteen, twenty, twenty-two. It does include an emergency clause. What is your pleasure?
No, to adjourn.
Motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not ask TEC to do this, but they kept the numbers the same as the previous contract, and I just thought I'd point that out.
All right, I don't see any more lights. Ms. McNear, you poll counsel.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup.
Aye.
Mrs. Ganthos.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye, ordinance number fourteen, twenty, twenty-two passes with seven affirmative votes. Excuse me, at this point, council, we're in old business. Is there any old business spring before council this evening? New business? Meetings and announcements. Ms. Weiscup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet in these chambers on Tuesday, May the tenth, at seven P.M.
Ms. Ganthos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of zoning will, Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at seven o'clock in the chambers here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Board of Health meets on May twelfth, adjacent to these chambers.
Got the lights covered? All right, at this point, then, we'll go back to the floor for communications from the audience. Is there anybody in the audience, like dressed counsel for any reason? Second call, third and final call, we'll close communications from the audience. Mr. Hawkins, can we go to you for an update on legislation still in development?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you review your internal memorandums, item number one was addressed with ordinance number fourteen, twenty, twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk of council finance director to enter into an agreement with TEC Engineering Incorporated for the provision of professional services for the operations and maintenance of the city of Springdale's traffic control system and declaring an emergency, and that passed with a seven-to-zero vote. Item number two was addressed with ordinance number thirteen, twenty, twenty-two, an ordinance declaring improvements to the real property to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, and declaring an emergency, and that passed with a seven-to-zero vote.
All right, and a recap of legislative items requested for our next council meeting.
I have none unless there's any requests from council or the administration.
Administration, we good? All right, we have item sixteen before us.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Council's adjourned.